So, welcome back everyone. I will have to repeat some of the things that I said in the beginning of the last session. My name is Anant Maringanti and right next to me is Karen Quello. I am from the Hyderabad Urban Lab Foundation and Karen Quello is a professor at Madras Institute of Development Studies. We are both parts of many different programs that are actually coming together here. And as I was saying in the previous session, one of the nice things about these two writing sessions, sessions about writing and to get published, is that it's coming one at the end of a PhD workshop and at the beginning of a Writing Urban India program that several of us are involved in. With the support of Urban Studies Foundation and anchored by Center for Policy Research. And many of us who will be speaking here are in some way or the other part of that program. At the program that we started about a year and a half ago as a pilot where we tried to figure out how to support young scholars in learning the craft of writing to get published. So, the second edition of that is going to be beginning very soon and we are thinking of it as a two-year-long process. So, but that's just the quick background. What we are trying to do in these two sessions is to push for a set of ideas. First of them really being that writing is, although it is often billed as a very isolating personal endeavor, it's also emancipatory as it is, a very, very social process. It involves other people. It involves learning to work with yourself, with your material, with other people. So, it's essentially learning a whole lot of techniques of managing this stuff. It's also a process of learning to figure out how to network with other people, building friendships and so on. So, and in some way, when we are thinking about writing, that it's about remaking yourself, which is something that both Gautam and Sushmita were talking about earlier. That it is a process of reimagining yourself, of putting yourself back together in a new form. But it is also a process of making sense with other people, right? And you actually produce an artifact that travels, it finds its pathways into the world. And sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't work. One of my mentors once told me that the first big thing that he wrote actually ended up putting him in this splendid isolation for years. Nobody read the book that he wrote. But it was something that actually was a project that gave him a pathway through life, right? And that's, that's the key thing, that it does something, it not do everything for you, it may not make your breakfast, but it will definitely help you figure out who you are and where you want to go. So, given all of those considerations, it's nice to hear what people who have struggled to figure out how to write, succeeded in some ways, failed in other ways. And it's nice to hear the voices of people who are in different locations within this field. So, that's what these two sections are about. The first one was about moving from a PhD thesis, dissertation to a book. The second one is about getting published in journals. And one of the things that, that we have been particularly concerned about is that one is, is this, is writing in urban studies a particularly difficult, particularly challenging thing? There's something very specific to that, right? The second thing is, is there a particular kind of challenge for Indian scholars or Southeast Asian scholars to find their way into international debates? What are those challenges, if there are any challenges? So, those are the kind of broad questions. What we have put together here is a panel of four scholars. One of them is Indiva Jana Lagada, he is finishing his PhD, is going to be defending very soon. And it's really nice to see Indiva waking up at six o'clock in the morning and coming online at this point. I don't know, Indiva, you were, you were very excited about being on the earlier panel also, if you managed to do that. But thanks for waking up and joining us. And then we have Tony O'Sullivan and John Banister. Both of them are professors in the UK and they are editors with the Urban Studies Journal. And then we have Noshin Anwar, who is a professor and the director of Karachi Urban Lab. So, we have a nice set of people who are located at very different positions within the field of writing. And what we are hoping to do is to hear from them, maybe 10 minutes each, talking us through what their experience is or what their points of view are. And then it's open for questions for everyone and then we'll take that course, yeah?
I think, so we'll get, I think, through these four people, two different perspectives. So, Indiva will talk about writing, submitting, being reviewed and the challenges of that. And then the two, John and Tony from Urban Studies Journal and Noshin, I think as a representative of IJr, will talk about from their end as editors, what does it look like to receive articles, review them? And what are the sort of things that they look for in order to put out an article through the review process? And bring them out to the other. So, you'll hear from both sides.
Indiva, do you want to go? The sequence that we are thinking of is that we will start with Indiva, then we will hear from Noshin and then we will move on to John and Tony. Is that, is that sequence fine? For all of you? Great, thank you. So, Indiva, you want to go?
Sure. Hi, everyone. Thank you so much. It's great to see Anant and Karen on screen. And I was at the IHS PhD workshop a couple of years ago and it was such a shaping experience. And, oh, hi, everyone. I'm excited for all of you who are there. So, first I have to say, you know, thank you for inviting me here and to speak from this perspective of, you know, finishing up graduate school, publishing. I'm excited to hear from the editors, but I'll try to briefly say something about my experiences with publishing, which I'm hoping will be useful to everyone there. So, I thought I'd walk through one particular experience, which really begins. Oh, so I should, I should introduce myself. My name is Indiva Jana Lagada. I'm a PhD candidate in anthropology and South Asia studies at the University of Pennsylvania right now. I am defending in April. And between 2014, 2016, I worked at the Hyderabad Urban Lab for two years. So, I really started my PhD in 2016. And in that first semester of my PhD, I had just moved from India to the US. I was in a graduate seminar and I was taking a class on neoliberalism and the city with one of my now advisors, Lisa Mitchell. And she assigned us a midterm assignment about a month into the class, asking us to follow an object, follow an urban object and think about neoliberalism. And maybe because I was missing Hyderabad so much, I decided that I'm going to think about tea shops and tea in Hyderabad. And I wrote this 2,000-word piece on tea shops. And really what it became was an essay about the ways in which people form relations in these tea shops, political relations, social relations that are maintained, lubricated, produced, reproduced. And in there, I threw in a reference to this idea of political entrepreneurs. And that was just the beginning of what then became two more sort of term papers for seminars, what became a couple of conference papers that I gave at the anthropology conference in the US and another workshop at Penn. I got, I got really animated by this idea of political entrepreneurs. And by 2018, I had pretty, I, I had a pretty good theorization, I thought, of what I wanted to say. But nonetheless, kind of lost steam and shelved it. And then in 2019 is when I started my PhD fieldwork. And doing more fieldwork actually continued to feed into those ideas that I've been developing. And I got excited about them again, but I wasn't sure what to do with this paper, how I wanted to present it, where it should go. And then I did the IHS PhD workshop and Karen Quello was there and she had mentioned that urban studies is actually looking for articles from India and if we have something that we'd like to submit, they'd be interested in reviewing it. And even then, I didn't think of this paper and I was like, oh, maybe I might have something, I'll think about it. And it was really during the pandemic, when everything broke down, I was stuck at home, not doing any fieldwork. And the one connection I still had to my fieldwork was that I was still seeing these actors that I call political entrepreneurs on social media, doing stuff, doing social work, doing the work of getting things to people. And that kind of crystallized everything for me about the subject that I was interested in. And I decided to, okay, now I'm going to write this up for urban studies and submit it. And then, you know, in this article of political entrepreneurs that I wrote for urban studies comes out only in May 2021, which is a full five years after I first formulate the idea, seven years after I first start the fieldwork. And that 3,000-word essay on tea becomes just three sentences in this final paper. And my contribution, you know, the contribution that this paper makes only gets fine-tuned in the very last draft that I submit in January 2021. So, I'm sharing all of this to kind of tease out a couple of things that I think are useful to know and think about while you're in graduate school, while you're, you know, finishing up and on the job market or generally wanting to publish your research. And I'll go about them sequentially. And the first one, I think that I want to, actually this ends up sort of rehashing things that Anant said at the beginning of the talk, but I'll, I'll try to expand on them a little more. So, three points. The first is, you know, scholarship is collective. And the, and scholarship is public. So, you know, I think that there has to be an openness to share your ideas, to be open to revising them, to be open to fine-tuning them based on responses from reviewers, from a real audience. And the other thing about publishing is that publishing takes time. So, you have to sort of plan out what you want to send, how much time you're going to spend on it. I think an easy mistake to make is to submit an early draft. And I've really found that don't submit an early draft, don't submit your first draft. What you really want is some form of peer review, even before you submit for peer review. And that means sharing with your mentors, sharing with your peers, to get a sense of what it is in your idea that's speaking to people and what to actually fine tune your contribution. So, when you're submitting, send a strong revision or send a refined version of what might have been your first idea. So, you know, in my case, it ended up being at conferences and through term papers, getting comments from my advisors that I really was able to work on this paper. And by the time I submitted it, a few years of work and thinking had gone into it. And the other thing is to really be open to revision and accept rejection. I think it's, it's very daunting and scary to the thought that you could get rejected at the desk or even get rejected after a few weeks or months in review, you know, reviews can take a long time. And I remember that even, you know, even last year, I was talking to my PhD advisor and I was submitting an article, a manuscript for publication. And I was really nervous and I was like, I'm, I'm just really nervous, it's going to get rejected. And he very wisely pointed out to me that that's fine, you know, rejection is part of the process. And if I get rejected, that's, 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 that's a, a learning opportunity. And maybe there's something that needs to be changed and maybe it needs to go to a different avenue. So, rejection is okay and you have to accept it in this process of scholarly publication, which is another way in which scholarship is collective and public. You know, so it, what, what really comes out in a journal is substantially revised, collectively shaped product. And then the other thing about, you know, scholarship being collective and public is to really look out for opportunities, look out for collectives to be part of, conversations to be a part of. Submit your writing to conferences, submit your writing to various avenues where you can speak to other people, share your ideas and get feedback. And I think that it's, it's, it's very useful to share early drafts rather than being very protective of them because it's at that early stage that you actually have the capacity to revise and revise productively and meaningfully. And it's very useful to get that external feedback then. So, with that, that was my first point, that scholarship is collective and public and it takes time. So, take your time, plan it out. You know, I, I understand the difficulty of being in your, the last year of your PhD and needing to publish or being on the job market and needing to publish. And that's not a great position to be in. So, planning the little head and having something in mind, prioritizing one article that you want to send out and finding the right journal for it. And that brings me to my second point, which is knowing your contribution. As I said, that, you know, in, in my own case, I feel like my contribution got really fine-tuned only in the very final stage of submission of this article that I'm talking about. But all along, I had an idea of what I wanted to say. And that's really something that I learned over time. I think when I first started writing scholarly papers, you know, in 2014, in 2015, I had a little bit more of the problem of writing long introductions, which amounted to saying, look how much I've read. You know, look at this vast survey of literature that I'm able to do. I, you know, I can touch upon all of these different theories and theorists and, and you'd have to really go deep into that piece of writing to get to my thought and my argument. And, you know, I was very lucky to have mentors and advisors who would point that out to me and say, you know, it's great that you've read all of this stuff, but we really want to hear what you have to say. You know, and, you know, Anant is there and I, I don't know if Gautam is there, but Gautam and Anant were among the people who nudged me in this direction to say, you, your writing should be about what you think. And, and so, you know, over time, it's really taken me all of these years to develop a writing practice. And that's another thing that takes time, writing takes time as well. And it's important to think of writing itself as analysis. I, I hear a lot of people putting off writing, saying, I need to read this thing or I need to analyze this data or, you know, something, some excuse of that sort, some pretext of that sort. And I want to put forward this idea that writing itself is part of the analysis that, you know, yes, there can be a lot gained from coding your data or analyzing it using some kind of techniques. But I think writing itself is a very powerful technique and is unavoidable in the way that we do scholarships. So, really hone that craft and technique of writing as analysis. And, you know, I think that there's this unrealistic expectation that we have, that we can write all day, every day or that you can write something of quality in a very short time. I think that perhaps you can write something that is striking in a very short time. But I think good writing takes time and takes revision. And it shows that it's gone through feedback, through review and you're coming back with revised ideas with more nuanced theorizations that are, that are connecting different conversations, that are making a productive contribution. And so, so I think, you know, in thinking about your contribution, be open to learn, learn from others, take the feedback and avoid the look how much I've read syndrome. And instead, really craft what it is you're trying to say. It can be in simple words, you know, you can start with the sort of dummy version of what you want to say. Or actually, that's not even a dummy version. It can be really difficult and sophisticated to be able to explain what you're trying to say in really simple language. And one other thing I'll, I'll say about contribution that I've learnt in the last couple of years, especially as I'm writing grants, like that's another thing that we do as graduate students. We learn as graduate students is writing grants. And something that I've found really useful in, in this practice of learning how to write grants, especially in my department and among my mentors here is a sort of discouragement of this idea of filling a gap. And, you know, the, to, to push yourself to think beyond this rationale that I'm writing this article to fill a gap. So, you know, an article on Hyderabad in urban studies journal isn't valuable just because there's no other article on Hyderabad. It needs to make some other kind of positive contribution. So, how do you articulate that positive contribution? It's not just filling a gap or a lack of some kind, but what does addressing that lack do? And maybe thinking of it in that second way is more useful and will help you get to what your contribution is a little more clearly than just thinking of it as, no one's really written about this, I'm doing that. You know, and, and there are very, there are a few, there are quite a few topics, which maybe that is a worthy rationale to say that no one's really written about this. But then think, think about, you know, what it does to now write about it, what, what does it produce, what does it generate? So, I kind of mixed up my second and third points. So, the second point was about knowing your contribution and the third is about writing as analysis. And I think, you know, what I, what I want to end on is thinking about writing as a very, as a craft, as a standard practice. We, we all have a lot of ideas, a lot of mystifications around writing. I, I still struggle with this, I still continue to work on demystifying writing for myself. Like I'll always find myself, you know, creating some kind of mystifications around writing, such as, you know, I need four hours of uninterrupted time by myself to be able to do writing or, or something like, I need to be inspired, I need to have some kind of like, you know, spark, some kind of a eureka moment to be able to say something. But in, in the last two and a half years of writing up in my dissertation, writing up for my dissertation, I'll say that my best writing actually has happened in moments where it's just, I have an hour, I'm with the writing group and I'm just putting down ideas, which at that moment are completely encouayed, dispersed, fragmented. And then over time, I can polish them, work on them. So, writing is a habit, writing is also an everyday practice and it has to be an everyday practice. Incidentally, even as I'm speaking to you here, this, this week and next week, I'm part of a writing bootcamp where, you know, I'm working with a group, it's an accountability, accountability group to get me through this sort of final leg of my dissertation. I'm drafting my introduction and pulling it all together. And, you know, one of the things that was shared with us was this idea that people that write every day are more, are, are more productive in a sense, you know, in quantitative terms. And people that write every day and have some kind of accountability are sort of perform even better. So, you know, this reference to performance and productivity is just to kind of emphasize that accountability and collectivity is really important. And that doesn't mean that you need to have a writing group, which is very rigid or has to meet every week or something like that. For me, accountability over the years has been, you know, knowing that, knowing that I have peers and mentors who want to read my work and I'll tell them that I'm going to have this to you by this date and be able to put it out there and, and get their feedback or signing up for conferences or signing up to, you know, submit something in response to a call for papers, using those opportunities, taking inspiration from calls for papers that might be touching on concepts that are not in my normal wheelhouse, but using them to generate some new thinking. And then, you know, I also carry with me all my mentors in a certain sense. You know, even though Anant and Gautam might not have read my drafts in recent times, I, I, these days I've been sending them the sort of completed versions. But when I'm writing them in my head, I'm like, what would Anant say to this, what would Gautam say? And in this way also, there's a sort of collectivity in, in how we write and, and that's, that's important. And there are other genres of writing, which can be more about free expression or, you know, being able to articulate your opinion in a beautiful literary way that you want to be just right and not just about how it contributes to a literature. But scholarly publication isn't that and, but has its own benefits and has its own power and has its own beauty as well. And I guess I'm also encouraging you to invest in that, invest in writing well in scholarly publications as well. So, you know, this is, this was sort of my personal trajectory with one paper, some of my personal experiences. I, I will, you know, caveat this by saying that it's very easy to hear someone else's experience and kind of over emphasize it. Like I, I, I know that I'll hear people having bad experiences with reviews, getting desk rejected or getting rejected after a long time in review and then harbor this feeling that that's going to happen to me. You know, my paper is going to be stuck in review for a year and then get rejected. And it could, but also the opposite could happen where I'll get back my reviews very soon, they'll be very positive. So, I think scholarly publication is sort of Kafkaesque in that it's a unique path that all of our papers take. And, but it can be uniquely good or uniquely bad and you just have to do it. You have to submit your paper, accept rejection, if that's what you get, accept reviewer comments. So, that final draft of urban studies, even though I'd been working on this article for so many years, you know, one of the reviewers rightly pointed out that, you know, my contribution wasn't really framed right for a journal like urban studies. I think the way I'd originally framed my contribution, it was speaking to anthropology as a discipline or geography as a discipline more so than urban studies broadly. And this, this reviewer pointed out that there's actually really important political science literature on this topic that is not being addressed. And, you know, partly this had to do with me not really thinking before that, that I could contribute to that debate. But then this nudge from a reviewer and, and the editor also saying that, yes, I think you should do this and I think you can do this well. Actually, I think pushed my paper to be better than it could have been otherwise. So, you know, I'll, I'll stop there and just say that, you know, in Philadelphia, we have a basketball team called the 76ers and their motto is trust the process. And that's, that's what I would leave you with, trust the process, trust yourself, trust your writing, plan it out, submit. The worst thing that can happen is rejection, you can always resubmit. And I hope that was useful and I hope I didn't go too much over time. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Indiva.
Thanks, Nivea. Uh we should take my I unmuted myself on this laptop and that started getting a lot of feedback, so, okay. Um I think um like we did in the last session, if you have questions, um please uh type them into the chat, you want to raise the questions orally, can we pass the mic on at some point of time, okay. But let's do all of those questions towards the end after we hear it from everyone. So um let's move on to Narashin Anbar.
Thank you so much, Anant, and really a pleasure to be a part of this conversation, uh thank you for inviting me. Um so um Karen mentioned uh that I should highlight um a little bit about my experience as a member editorial board IJER and I just only recently joined, actually, it's just been a year. And I will highlight that, uh but before doing so, since we've been given approximately ten minutes to talk about our personal journeys in this writing process as as urban as urbanists, urban scholars and writers. Um I'd like to sort of chart this journey from uh from my first article on the urban, which was actually not submitted to urban studies but was submitted to Antipode and um and and then sort of I'd like to move on to what it's been like over the last decade or so. As I've sort of entered into this euphoria of reviewing uh of being a sort of doing peer reviews for for articles and now coming on the uh IJER editorial board. And also, I'd I'd like to also talk about the kinds of challenges that that young academics face in Pakistan when it comes to to writing and publishing. And these are historical challenges, these are also challenges of the economy that seep into into uh into academic institutions and also limit um you know, prevent uh the kinds of outputs, productive outputs that 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 one would like to see and that the kinds of outputs that we are also talking about today, so um so my first sort of urban article came out in in uh in in Antipode and what I do recall is how incredibly fearful that journey was and because the this this was my first experience with peer review um comments. And and they were not kind, uh one of them was 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 kind. And I knew exactly who who that comment came from and and the remaining were just uh just tore me apart and and I remember that I was on the verge of tears for 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 several weeks before I sort of revisited those comments, I didn't want to look at them for for the longest time and and it was it was actually really, really terrifying. And I think what what I'm seeing over here is certainly not not an exception by any means, I think that this is the kind of journey that that many of us uh have have gone through, especially for those of us uh who are in the global south in writing from the south, situated in in institutions in the global south. And then we aim to present our work in um in very high quality, high standard journals uh that are based in the global north and and we sort of negotiate our ways through these journeys without necessarily having mentors, so I I never really had a mentor as such who who could guide me and tell me uh even in the PhD process that this this these are the sorts of things that you should be aware of. And and it's so much of the kind of stuff that Gotham talked about earlier that Endevar has also highlighted today. So um but nevertheless, uh I persevered very much on my own and because of that one particular peer review that was incredibly positive and very caring. And the result was that the that the article was published and it was the right place uh for it to be in Antipode. And many fast forward many, many years, um I I don't fear those peer reviews anymore, it's been part of a process, it's been part of a journey. I actually look forward to those peer reviews, whether it's aiming for uh for journals like Urban Studies or um or or sort of a variety of different journals that we that we target um for as as urbanists or as urban scholars. But the one thing that that I have uh noted, uh and I'm I'm considerably sensitive about is that now as someone who also does the peer reviewing and is also on on the editorial uh board of of a leading um urban journal. The importance of of handling uh peer reviews uh with a strong touch of kindness that that um the the importance of kindness, the importance of being mindful with the choice of words of not cutting down and being mean spirited, which happens all the time is very, very important irrespective of whether or not that article draft belongs in that in that journal. This is acutely important, so uh so as uh so I run a lab, I run a research, small research lab called the Karachi Urban Lab over here in 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 Karachi, it's based at a public sector university where I teach, the IBA. And I mentor a fair number of colleagues who are um sort of graduate students and some just recently finished their PhDs. And I was just recently having a conversation with one of my colleagues who submitted um an abstract, uh you know, for this was actually for a conference presentation which eventually was hopefully going to turn into a journal article for a special issue. And uh this was based for a conference in Australia and I will not mention the institution or the journal that was going to be targeted. But the reviews that he received were incredibly, incredibly negative, but not negative in a productive sense. Negative in an incredibly unproductive and in in you know, in a in a sort of cutting down the person and also kind of toned the undertones of which was slightly racist, if I may be permitted to use that that term. So I think that increasingly in a world where as academics we engage more and more both in terms of our conceptual framings, in terms of theory and in terms of writing with notions of care and empathy, I think that that transition in terms of the peer review landscape hasn't quite fully happened and I think that this is where as as journal editors we need to be very, very conscious in terms of how we look at those peer reviews when we send articles out for peer review purposes and then they come back with peer review comments that we're conscious of of the language that the anonymous reviewers have have adopted. And and just, you know, I mean personally, I feel that if they are incredibly negative and and very in in a very unproductive sense, uh then those those reviews should be rejected, they should not be included. And I I really feel very, very strongly about, you know, about this process. So so this sort of leads me to the question of to the issue of the very important issue of mentoring. And this is a huge challenge um in Pakistan, in the in the academic landscape. So in Pakistan, uh generally speaking, across across the academies, especially the social sciences and liberal arts. Sort of we're looking at histories and political economies of uh you know, of of an increasingly suffocating landscape uh for political reasons over the last fifty, sixty years. And where there has been room for for greater conversations and and greater engagement with the liberal arts and social sciences tradition. Young academics in universities in Pakistan struggle for a wide variety of reasons, one of this of course is that uh there were there 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 is very limited access to creative, to building creative writing skills. Secondly, within universities, especially public sector universities, there is limited, if no, access to social sciences databases. And I recall when I returned to Pakistan shortly after I finished my PhD at at Columbia University. Uh this was a big shock to me because one of the challenges then was, well, how do I stay abreast of the kind of knowledge that is circulating out there in terms of latest journal articles and and books and so forth, I mean, how do I tap into this knowledge? So tapping into this knowledge then to build your conceptual foundations, to to tap into the latest theories, to be able to do the kinds of things that Endevar has so beautifully pointed out, then becomes a massive challenge for young academics, for young faculty members sitting in, especially in public sector universities in Pakistan. So if you're privileged to be in a private sector university of which there are very, very few across the Pakistan landscape, that's a different kind of story, right? And but by and large, most young faculty members, whether they're writing in political science or on urban issues or so forth, are writing for public sector universities and when you're facing very limited databases, then you start struggling. And this then leads to, you know, to the next issue, well, where do you find open access uh journals and very, very few journals within the urban studies terrain are open access journals. And IJER happens to be one of them, except for one of IJER's um issues, which is the spotlight issue. Which is available to everyone, which is fantastic, but then that has a very different kind of um of an orientation. So when you start looking at some of their other issues uh like interventions and and it's mainstream, uh you know, jour- journals that they produce, that's all behind a paywall. And that is certainly also the ca- the, you know, the 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 same situation for the journal of studies and society and space and many, many others. You know, could go on with with a with a with a, uh you know, with a with an extensive list. So what do young faculty members, young scholars do sitting in countries like Pakistan when they are facing these kinds of of challenges, you know, it's 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 a it's a huge uh it's it's a wall that often people cannot climb, so what what do we do, so typically you know, we reach out to colleagues sitting in the global north and ask them to to send us those articles or or we or we try and find ways to ask our librarians to use whatever sources they have to tap into those articles, I mean, I I end up doing this on a routine base. So for instance, any uh journal that is a state journal is almost impossible to access from Pakistan, even if we have a certain amount of access to social science databases because state journals cost a lot of money. And and public sector academic institutions in Pakistan can't afford to, uh you know, to uh you know, to subscribe to them. So we end up using a network of uh of colleagues in in the global north and we ask them to, you know, hello, can you you know, can you help us to access these kinds of journals and and if you sort of built up a good network of of colleagues and mates out there, they're incredibly forthcoming and always very generous along those lines. So I think keeping these kinds of issues in mind is is incredibly important when we start thinking about, well, what is it like for a young faculty member who wants to publish an urban studies uh or or is is a fledgling urbanist, you know, what kinds of challenges does do he, does he and she face when they when they're a part of a public sector institution uh writing from Pakistan, you know, these are very, very real difficulties, very, very real challenges. And alongside this, uh you know, we have a situation over here in Pakistan, we have this entity called the Higher Education Commission. And who is simultaneously putting an enormous amount of of emphasis on on producing a research culture. But this is a research cu- culture that is also fraught with uh you know, with all kinds of colonial, post-colonial, um you know, pitfalls and uh and and politics of thinking, of acting uh of writing and and this is not an organization that is necessarily interested in in at least in my experience and from what I've seen in in building sort of a fraternity or or a network that that helps young faculty members and and budding urbanists. You know, to to be to push beyond certain kinds of rhetorics and institutional frameworks to tap into uh you know, the sorts of networks, global networks that would make it easier for them then to access the kind of knowledge building infrastructures that are that are necessary. Some of the kinds of 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 things uh that are that I talked about. And and even sort of so typically when it comes to 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 research and writing even on the urban in institutions in Pakistan um people in institutions will generally, you know, they'll ask, well, you know, what tier one publication did you publish in? What was its impact factor and the contents of 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 that particular article or what it talked about, the critical thinking that it might have deployed are really not of interest whatsoever, what matters are those numerical um you know, uh those those numbers, you know, high impact factor, three point something, sixteen point something, whatever. And and that's all that matters at the end of the day and this is, I mean, I think that this is the sort of thing that is happening in institutions elsewhere too, but in Pakistan uh with this new emphasis by the Higher Education Commission on producing research. There is uh an almost an obsession, a fixation with high impact factor journals without necessarily uh indulging in more substantive conversations on, you know, well, you know, what does critical thinking mean, how what is this journey about, what are peer review processes, why mentoring is so important. So in that context, one of the reasons why I set up the Karachi Urban Lab was also largely to to uh to engage in conversations with fellow urbanists about how we can mentor young uh faculty members. And to be able to avoid the kinds of pitfalls that that people like me have experienced in the past and many other colleagues continue to experience. And what this mentorship might look like in terms of um of 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 building the kinds of networks that Endevar also highlighted earlier. And and this is also a very difficult thing to do if you're sitting in Pakistan because people are not necessarily interested in research. And I certainly not interested in writing, I mean, this was a conversation that Anant and I had very briefly uh yesterday when we talked on on the cell phone and uh Anant mentioned an interesting point. You know, that in South Asia typically we come from a history where there is a lot of emphasis on the oral. But perhaps no, what's not so much emphasis on the writing, so how do we push uh our young researchers and our colleagues to simply sit down and write, what kind of discipline is needed, but I think that more than the discipline, it's it's also a question of what do people have the interest, is there even an interest in writing and there may not be and this is and this is something that I've learned, that you have to then kind of leave, let people be. Sort of, you know, let 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 that, if if that interest doesn't form, then then there's nothing that you can do about it. So you just have to let people be and leave them in their space and then maybe through deeper conversations, through constant engagements. Maybe that spark will come somewhere and and I've seen that happen in a few cases and then in many, many other cases. Uh people don't, simply don't want to write and 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 that is something, you know, it's it's a space in which there is very little maneuverability, you really can't negotiate that. You can't push people if they're not interested in writing, young researchers, budding urbanists who are applying for PhD programs and even for master's programs, well, how do you take a simple idea and just put it, you know, on a piece of paper and then let's have a conversation about it and then I'll help you to structure it maybe for a journal article. No, you don't want to get there, you know, you're not interested in in that kind of a journey, so so these are the sorts of things that um that interests me at the Karachi Urban Lab in terms of of thinking about mentoring and and engaging in mentoring and it's it's so uh so my final point, uh you know, in 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 terms of what Karen mentioned, that if I could talk a little bit about about my role as as member editorial board at IJER and the sorts of things that um that are expected from prospective um um sort of authors who who submit to IJER. Uh so so the the answer to that is that it actually depends upon uh what sort of um sort of what sort, sort of what what kind of of uh what mode of writing the author is is aiming to produce for a journal like IJER, so if you're looking for a spotlight issue, if you're looking to engage in a spotlight issue, it's a very different set of criteria. That is a much, I if I may be permitted to use the word, a much easier, less uh theory laden mode of engagement uh and spotlight issues uh are available, they're not behind a paywall, they're available, uh you know, for for everyone to access. And then there are the interventions issues which are usually grouped as uh several mini uh fifteen hundred word essays, two thousand word essays. That could be anywhere from uh you know, a half a dozen to, you know, to twenty or so. And and those are generally behind a paywall and those are structured in a very different kind of way and uh one of my colleagues uh who who was the editor for the interventions issues um sort of explained i- in a recent meeting just how challenging it is to edit those interventions in issues when a when a group of several people come together as a part of a fairly large collective to focus on one or two specific kinds of themes. And then these are these are short, short essays, but also very exciting and um but you know, the editors' responsibilities in that context then are huge and then there is a lot of back and forth and back and forth, I mean, and I know I I've seen almost a year and a half to two years. Uh you know, it can take as long as that for one particular interventions issue to come out, but these are a different way of engaging, a different way of writing, a different level of creativity and then there are the regular, more conventional ways of engaging of writing in uh you know, in IJER, which are their mainstream journal articles, which are always behind a paywall, uh sadly and and I think that again for um you know, and this is a, this is a point that um that that Endevar also highlighted earlier. For 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 those um who are interested in 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 submitting articles for for IJER. I would underscore, look very, very carefully at what the journal demands and what highlights as criteria. What are its aims and objectives in terms of a prospective journal article for, you know, for a prospective author and these aims and objectives are on the IJER um website. And typically, sort of I've um now pure, I've reviewed a number of articles over the last year and a half or so for IJER. And typically, those that are rejected, I mean, there could be a wide variety of reasons why they are rejected. But right off the cuff, the ones that are rejected uh straight away are the ones simply don't fit into IJER's aims and objectives and this typically happens because the 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 author didn't actually spend a little bit of time engaging with those aims and objectives on the website. And this is really, really important because I think that can also save you a great deal of uh of pain and agony. Because um you know, rejections are good, but they're not necessarily good if you didn't spend time actually looking at the you know, the journal's website and and getting a clear understanding of what those aims and objectives are. And then you submit and then this rejection happens and then you're like wondering okay, well, you know, I mean, did I get the, I I thought I got it here, but you know, this is not making sense to me and then there is this one sentence there from the editor that says, well, you know, it just doesn't fit into IJER's aims and objectives. So I think that that going through the process for 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 urban journals like IJr. is also, it's also very, very important to get onto that website to to read its aims and objectives and perhaps even to to try and get a hold of some of their popular journal articles and take a look at, you know, how they've been written, how they've been structured. That also gives you a good sense of, you know, well, if that particular article got accepted and it's one of the most popular journal articles, it could be popular for a wide variety of reasons. But it certainly also gives you a sense of how the journal has been structured, how the argument flows. Some of the basic criteria, I think, of writing that we, you know, that we, that we, that we should always keep in mind, irrespective of whether it's a journal for urban studies or IJr. or any other journal. Something about structure, something about flow that also then has to connect with the aims and objectives of the journal, aside from the novelty of a theme or an idea. And and then finally, you know, when it comes to, and I'd like to end on this point, on novelty in in writing and novelty in ideas. So so without necessarily mentioning the journal, the the urban journal. So so a group of us, we were involved in a project on 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 heat in 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 Asia. And we submitted a collective of collection for a special issue. And and the, so the ideas presented in in that particular special issue are quite sort of, I would say, very much at the frontier of thinking about climate and heat and bodies and knowledge systems and so forth. And and this is a fairly large collection of of articles in in what will hopefully be a special issue that will be published sometime next year, fingers crossed. And one of the interesting things is that when you're sort of, when you start writing from a, from a, to what is a kind of a a fairly radical sort of location in terms of generating new ideas and novel ways of thinking which haven't been written about for before. And on which there is actually very little substantive thinking, very little or no substantive knowledge when it comes to concepts and theories, you also face the the challenge or the the likelihood of being rejected because it may be found out to a bunch of peer reviewers who will not necessarily understand where you're coming from in terms of those ideas. So how do you then make this transmission possible in, you know, in a fairly cohesive and friction free or minimal friction, you know, basis? This is a very hard thing to do. This is the new frontier that I'm looking at today. You know, and this is a very, very challenging one. You know, you've got this new project. It's really exciting. There are a bunch of like minded people, you know, you put a special issue together and you know it's novel, you know, it's a new frontier of thinking. But then transmitting it and getting that through a journal and then getting that through a peer review process actually generates a new set of challenges, you know, and this is something that is radically new for me. And 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 it's very exciting, but it's also really, really anxiety inducing. Because in this writing process, I have a bunch of colleagues with me who are young scholars. And when we got our peer review reviews back for, you know, for one particular set of of articles, my younger colleagues were really very, very, you know, they were, they were very, they've been very angst ridden. How are we going to jump through these hoops? You know, so this is when mentoring and hand, holding hands and sitting down together and and reaffirming your faith and belief in the quality of your writing and the quality of your ideas. And again, what Indivar was pointing out, right, that, you know, where you're writing from, the location, your position, your journey, the collectives, the networks. You know, just, it's actually made me far more emboldened now, right, that hell no, I'm gonna make this happen. And because my younger colleagues are a part of this, and this is so, so, so important for them, it's even more important that this journey be as friction free and as 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 a collective force of of positive energy building as possible. You know, so I think that these sort of affirmations also then are incredibly important. So yes, absolutely. Thank you, Anant and Karen. I'll stop right there.
Thanks, Noshin. That was really lovely and very useful. And we've received a number of comments along the way. We will share them with you, but you've actually answered some of the questions that came up also. So we'll take up them towards the end. Now we move on to Tonya Sullivan and then John.
Hi, thank you. Thank you very much. And and thank you so much for inviting us to be part of your session. If perhaps you could share the first slide. That would be great. But but whilst we're waiting, I I just want to state that I thought there's so much for me to agree with with Indivar Noshin's comments. They were all, they're all spot on. But before I start, I think there are three of those comments which which are which are worth just touching base with. And the first is rejection. Nobody likes to be rejected for anything that they do in life. But I would make this point, if you think of who are the greatest scholars in the field that you look up to, I guarantee that they've all had work rejected. Right? It is, it is normal as you develop and you find your voice and learn how to position your work that you're not great to begin with and you reject it. And all the greatest scholars in the world have had multiple items rejected. And so it is part of that learning process, part of that apprenticeship of your completing your masters or doctoral studies that this is something new for you to learn. The second point, which I think I I want to go back to is the receiving comments from referees. Now, I'm very sensitive to Noshin's point that referees have an obligation. Not just to be critical, but to be critical in a way which enables a scholar to develop their work. And just being critical for critical sake is is bad scholarship in and of itself. And many of you will become referees and a good way to learn about journals is to volunteer to become a referee for a journal. But our work is very precious. And if we're doing a PhD, it has defined our lives for three, four, five years. It is everything that we do. And then to receive criticism can be a very, very stressful, very debilitating moment. But just as I would advise my, as I advise my children, right? Count to ten, breathe, walk away from it, give some time before you come back to read those comments. Because the first time you read them, you're full of anger and disappointment. That's natural. So am I. But then when you go away and you pause and you give thought, you can come back and you can say, well, actually, on reflection, these are helpful, these are positive, but these are ones I'm going to fight. Because you don't have to do everything that referees do, but you suggest, but you need to take account of and respond to everything that referees suggest. And then I think the third point be before we kick on, which I thought was wonderful from Indivar speaking of the nature of of your own research and moving to publication, being a collaborative process, a sharing process. It's that it's that step towards becoming public. And Noshin's comment about the difficulty in in accessing and knowing of other journals. And I think that initiatives such as writing Urban India are fantastic. But your collaboration should be really about three things. When you're reaching out and you're talking to friends and and mentors, it it has to be as Indivar suggested, helping you come to be able to clarify the nature of your contribution. But then, as Noshin suggested, it's also about using your networks to access material that is not readily available to you. And using your networks to help guide you as to which journal is the most appropriate outlet for your work. And I think those are three things that you should be looking for when you reach out to mentors, friends, other scholars. Those are the three things that you need to think about. So with that, if we could move on to the next slide, please. So this is the the scope of the Journal of Urban Studies. If you access our website and and the journal, this will tell you what types of papers we're interested in, what the focus of those papers should be. And it doesn't matter whether you're thinking about urban studies or any journal. This emphasizes Noshin's point. You really need to start to learn what that journal's about, what's it's interested in. And through your contacts, if you haven't got direct access to the journal, find out, you know, examples of papers within that journal. So you have a feel for the way in which they are articulated and presented. But also using the journal to find out who else around the world has been engaging in the topic that you're interested in. Think about this in terms of friendship. If you're wishing to develop a friendship and you don't ask anything about the person that you're trying to become a friend with, and all you wish to do is talk about yourself, then I would suggest that friendship won't blossom. So it's a two way process. The journal has to be interested in you. Of course we are. But you also have to be interested in us. What are we about? What types of articles do we produce? What are the debates that we're carrying? Okay, so the next slide, please. Now, most journals and as certainly does, offers quite detailed guidance for the different types of contributions that we publish. And we publish research articles, critical commentaries and debates papers. And we also publish special issues. And if you can, and this is open access, that all the guidance is open access. If you follow this guidance, it provides really detailed information. One of the common reasons for papers getting rejected, which I'll move on to, is that they simply, the papers have simply not followed the guidance as to how you should build and structure a particular contribution for the journal. So again, most, if not all, journals carry guidance as to how to develop contributions. And I would strongly recommend that anybody thinking about a journal article for whatever journal that you follow the submission guidance that the journal specifically offers. So our next slide, please. So as I said in my introductory remarks, your mentors should help guide you as to the nature of the outlet outlet that you publish in. But you need a bit of awareness of that outlet and what they're actually developing. And we receive well over a thousand submissions per annum. And we simply can't publish that volume of work. And so you have to put yourself in a position where you are one of the papers that we wish to take forward to review. You are one of the papers that we're prepared to support to go forward. And we do receive so many papers. And therefore, again, to emphasize getting published in urban studies is available in English and currently in eight other languages. This provides tips so you can make your paper look as if it's ready for and engaging with urban studies, which is the first key hurdle. And then when we come to assess a submission and our submissions are read in house to start off with, our editorial team review. And if our editorial team think that there is merit and potential in the paper, it doesn't have to be perfect. Then we will send it out to external referees. And these are the things that we are looking for. First of all, originality and novelty. It has to be making some new claims, some new advance. It has to be developing what is known. And I think it was Indivar who suggested if there's been a paper that's been published on one city in the world to simply replicate it in another city is not that novelty. It, how does that research, how does what you found differ from what has gone on before? Right? So it has not just to be a simple case study. That's not an advance, just because it's in a different setting. It's how does that setting help shed new light on a particular topic? So originality and novelty. And then international appeal. Now, this is particularly relevant, I think, for journals like IJr. and urban studies and cities and so forth. The idea is that this journal is to be read by people around the world. And so why should people around the world read your paper? And it's, it can be because of the conceptual debates it engages in, the empirical debates it engages in, the methodological debates it gets in, engages in. But you have to make it accessible and of interest to an international authorship. And sometimes that means slightly less detail and more bigger picture. So a key challenge that we're interested in, you might have a wonderful, beautifully crafted, but minutely focused piece of work, which has significant relevance to you and maybe a handful of scholars in the world or a handful of policymakers in the world. But really, for an international journal, you need to be speaking to debates which which multiple groups are interested in. And this is key. You would be telling people in developing your article, how you are offering to advance current understanding in relation to a particular subject matter. Not replicating understanding, but furthering understanding, taking things forward, looking at things through a different theoretical perspective, looking at things through a different empirical perspective, how are you taking things forward? And then referees will pay attention to the extent to which you have a robust theory or or a robust evidence base backing your contribution. Does it offer sufficient depth and rigor in its in its data, theoretical or or empirical? And because that's, that's what we measure quality by. And you require to ensure that you have a robust theory with which to interpret the data that you present. And that data should be of a sufficient depth or quality to enable you to address the questions that you've posed. Which moves us on to the methodology. We really need to see very clearly the methodology that has guided the development of your data, because different methodologies lead to different types of data, different types of insight. So and here again is appeal to the international because if you want to appeal to international, if you say your work's important, then you must provide the opportunity for others elsewhere in the world to replicate it, to try your methodology on their dataset. So methodology is key. Now, for a journal like Urban Studies, quite often, but not always, research has policy relevance. And if it has policy relevance, then you should speak to that policy relevance. But that, be careful, we don't, you know, urban studies does not demand policy relevance at all. It's just if it is relevant to your work, please make sure you speak to it. And again, attention to journal guidelines and policies. I can't emphasize that enough. Whatever journal you go to, you really should look to their guidelines and policies. And while some of the content might not be open access, in in all cases, guidelines and policies should be. And then, of course, as in everything, a clear and logical argument development and presentation. And here I think Indivar again said something really interesting. None of us, right, none of us, not not the greatest scholars in the world, I would argue, actually sit down and write something of journal publishable quality in their first draft, their first ideas. Developing a paper is very much a debate with yourself as well as with others. And it takes time to refine and make clear the logical development of your work. Okay, thank you. Next slide, please. So there are some simple guidance. More detail on this is offered on our website. But there are, there's no one approach, but here is one approach which emphasizes some of these points. Introductions are very important. Introductions are the first things beyond the abstract entitled that people read. This should be positioning your work, laying out what big questions you're going to address. Identifying the debates with which you intend to engage. Telling us where the paper is going to go and what the offer is going to be. And also telling us how you're going to structure what follows. And it is really interesting, just from students from undergraduate to master's level to PhD level. Is how quite often this is taken for granted and insufficient attention is paid. To setting up and positioning before you jump into the detail. The second is literature review. And again, this is not, as Indivart said, everything about everything that has ever been written on a particular topic. Literature reviews should yes, point to certain key foundations. But the emphasis on the literature review should be on the materials that are relevant to help you interpret. The work that you're about to present. Again, it's my friendship argument at the beginning. If you are writing on a topic, what have others written on that topic? Show that engagement with those materials because it helps position what you yourself are going to say. Now, different journals have different emphases. But your main argument, your main text could all be theoretical. But you should develop in a logical, straightforward fashion, whether it's a theoretical contribution. Or whether it's an empirical contribution. And you should not just be saying, here are my findings, go and make of them what you will. There has to be attention to you saying, here are my findings. And then reflecting back on what others have said and reflecting back on the framework that I have offered you. These are the key insights that we can take from this work. This is what the critical assessment is, it's these are the key insights that we can take. These are clear demonstration of the advances that I'm making and also. They, but there are limitations, so the critical thing shows how you've developed. And how you interpret your empirical contribution in terms of what has gone on before. But they're also sensitive, nobody writes the perfect article. All my articles have sections where I say, but I've only gone so far that these are all the questions I failed to answer. This was the limitation of my data set and so forth. And then the key conclusion. We bring it all together quite often. Articles run out of steam, that's where you should take a break and come back and reflect on what is it that I've actually offered? How have I brought things together? And finally, where is my major contribution? Now, that kind of guidance, I hope, is the kind of guidance that working in collaboration with similar PhD scholars. With your mentors and accessing journals, that kind of guidance should be readily available. A couple of things I wish to emphasize, researchers often spend far more time than they spend on the article. Thinking about what title should I offer that article? And over the years, I've seen some really imaginative and very clever titles. But my key tip to all of you is write your title and put it into a search engine such as Google. And see what comes up. Yeah, because if you put it into a search engine and articles in a similar vein all pop up, you've got the right title. If you put your title in and a multitude of hardware shops come up with their websites, then you've got the wrong title. Because the whole point about developing an article and presenting an article. Is you're showing your works to the world and you want your, the world to engage with you and they won't be able to engage with you if they can't find you. So find a title which is not necessarily that exciting or one when you put it in, everyone in the world finds it. And likewise, the abstract should be very clear presenting what your content is, what the newness is that you're offering, the originality. And what some of your key results are. And so finally, the final slide please. One of the things that this is what we've drawn together over the years and it again goes to emphasize many of the points already made. But these are the things which we find. Which lead us to typically offering a desk reject prior. To considering whether we should send it out to editors, although some of these comments tend to come back at first review stage also. But the first is the article's just not in scope. It's just been submitted to us because people think urban studies is a good journal. But they haven't really reflected as to whether our journal carries such material. The second is poor motivation, the opposite of the things I was talking about on the previous slide. That you might be very clear what your contribution is, but you have to make clear to others what your contribution is. Another common failure is poor structure. That articles have sections which repeat one another, articles have sections which do not clearly distinguish theoretical and empirical material. It just has a poor structure and again, this is something. Which we all do. And this is something that we can address through revision and so forth. A further factor is the quality of English, this can be very challenging in many communities globally that we are seeking to engage with. And it's really unfortunate, but we are an English language journal. And if people cannot understand the expression that people are offering, then we can't offer a review of your paper. So it is worth, once the paper is developed, making sure that the language that is used is clear. Again, sometimes. We receive papers which have not followed journal guidance, particularly without requesting a special exception. And we can receive articles that are either far too long or far too short for our current guidance. And because we receive so many articles. This is a simple way in which we manage the volume of work. So if you think you can't write an article to word length. Then you must get in touch with the journal beforehand. And make a case as to why your submission is going to be outside the normal guidance. And then with a journal like Urban Studies, in which we publish both theoretical qualitative quantitative work, if you're publishing quantitative work again. If you start to report quantitative work which doesn't follow our guidance as to statistical significance. Then this is another reason as to why we would reject the paper. Thank you for your time and as with everyone, we'd be very happy to take questions.
Will I just jump in now and end? Right. So thank you very much, I'll just add a little. I think there's been three lovely presentations so far, I've really enjoyed them and I think that there's been an awful lot of wisdom encompassed in them. I collaborated with John in terms of the content of his presentation. And I've been reflecting on how to add to augment and not just repeat what. All three prior speakers have contributed, so I concluded. That I would, I would try and add a little color. At submission stage. The research is done, you've done the research. When you get to the stage of submission. What you're doing is engaging in an act of communication. And communication involves very different skills to undertaking research. What I'm going to do is I'm going to invite you to be me. I'm, I'm the editor in chief of Urban Studies for this year. Our years run from January to December and we take turns to be the editor in chief. It's a little appreciated fact. That to get your paper successfully published in Urban Studies. And you don't need three favorable reviews. And you actually need five favorable reviews. Because the way that we operate the journal, the editor in chief reads all of the papers that come in. And takes a first view on its appropriateness. And if he feels that there's a good possibility that a paper is suitable for the journal. He will then allocate it to a more specialized editor. Somebody who is operating in the field that's relevant to the paper, who will then read the paper. And decide for themselves whether or not it should go to review. So there are three gateways to get through in order to be successfully published. Now, you're all me. You're therefore a very busy person. Urban Studies isn't the only job that you've got, you've got other relevant academic contributions to make. And you've also got family responsibilities. And you've got extracurricular activities and you want a little bit of a life to yourself. You're in September. You've already read. Seven hundred and fifty, eight hundred papers this year. You're on your twentieth paper of the week. You. Begin by looking at the abstract. What's this paper about? And you find quite a lot of jargon. Some abstract and abstruse words, you find. A lack of a simple explanation of what the paper is about. How it's gone about its business and why it's important. You look at the word count. As against a maximum word count of about eight and a half thousand words. You notice that this paper is twelve thousand. You flick to the reference section. And you have a look down and you see that of thirty five references, thirty five citations. Twenty seven of those are to papers that were published in IJ. None of them are connecting with any papers which have been published in Urban Studies. And then you look at the formatting. And you see that the requirements that the journal has laid out on its website as to the way in which it wants this material presented. Haven't been followed, it's completely different. You haven't read a word of the paper yet. What opinion have you formed? So. My suggestion would be at this point. You would be feeling, well, maybe. The author or authors weren't that concerned. About having this paper published in Urban Studies. On the basis of no other information whatsoever than what I've given you. And you might suggest or you might think, well, perhaps that paper was actually written. To contribute to a debate, a conversation which is occurring in IJ. And maybe it's already been submitted to IJ. In a format that they would have recognized. And maybe IJ has said that they don't want to engage with it. You haven't begun to set. A strong foundation for moving forward. So. With your less than positive expectations. You begin to read. The introduction to the piece. The first sentence. Tells you that currently X percent of the world is urbanized. And in twenty fifty, Y percent of the world will be urbanized. And you're quite familiar with that sentence. You've read it as the opening sentence to about a hundred and fifty to two hundred other papers already this year. And you move through the introduction. And you notice that there are. Uses of terminology which, which jar slightly. You find lots of colloquialisms. You find people referring to. Prices, house prices, if it's a paper on housing that are skyrocketing. You'll see a sentence that says. X reckons Y. Or you'll see somebody rather than using the word name, this is named, they will, they will say. Oh, the moniker for this is, you will find words and things which jar. Is this overriding? The first impression that you got before you started reading it? Or is it reinforcing the first impression that you got from reading it? And you still haven't got to the main content of the paper. I could progress this further quite easily, but I don't think that that's particularly helpful. And it just goes to. It just goes to reinforce much of what the previous speakers were saying. And if you want to engage. With a journal because you believe that that journal is the appropriate place for the work that you've done. Then you need to think about. What that journal is. What it's trying to achieve. And how you can then engage with it on that basis because again, as John has already said. The paper that I'm reading here, the paper that you're reading here, the eight hundredth paper of the year that you're reading here. Is competing. Against a thousand other papers. For about a hundred and fifty publication slots. And it won't stand out on those bases, it won't get through the first gate. So, once you've done your research. Once you've. Discovered something of interest or value. The game that you're in is communication. And what you have to think about and practice and hone is your communication skills. And if you do that, you'll be published in Urban Studies.
Thank you, Tony, thanks all the speakers. I just wanted to add to that last comment about. Editors reading a thousand papers in a year and, and how do you compete against that? One of the things that I keep telling all my students and all the people who come to Hyderabad Urban Lab is that. To become an urbanist, to become an urbanist is, is in Hyderabad. Because you're an urbanist in different ways and different cities to become an urbanist in Hyderabad is to learn how to be one among. Ten million people. Right, what kinds of moral, ethical, technical, technological, political challenges does that pose to you? Think being able to think about that with the responsibility is what being an urbanist in Hyderabad means, right? So, so keep that in mind that it is not only about competing. It's also about being a responsible author who wants to say something important. Who has to make sure that their ideas travel and there are particular rules of the game and you have to be able to play the game as necessary. I've been looking through all the questions that have been coming in. There are many questions that I, that fortunately have been already addressed by the speakers, so. Example, questions about how do you approach a journal, how do you think about how to craft the argument, all of those kind of things. But there's one issue. Which, which kind of appears in different colors and then different articulations, then that question is about review bias. Can reviewers be referees be biased positively towards certain authors because they are influential and big and important names? Meaning that once you have arrived as an urban scholar, do you have it easy? If people know who you are, will they, will they let you pass through the gates without making you jump through the hoops? That's number one. And the connected question to that is that then, that do referees actually do know what they are referring all the time? Is it possible that they don't know what they are dealing with? And therefore actually end up giving very negative feedback or even say that they don't, they don't even know what they're doing? Can that then end up actually killing something important that is emerging? Simply because there is no connotation about that anywhere else and people don't know, so that's one question.
So I just wanted to also flag one more thing that came up in, I think, John's presentation. Which I think is relevant because part of the purpose of this session was to look at. Uh, which I think is relevant because part of the purpose of this uh session was to look at uh what are the kinds of challenges that make publishing in international journals very challenging for scholars from, say, India and other countries of the global south? And one of them, I think, that was flagged for me was the question of poor English. And I just, uh, you know, and I think uh in a way that brings up the question of how do international publications engage with with the problem of trying to be inclusive uh for to scholars that come from places where English is not a first language? Uh, what are the sort of, um, I think, I mean, the onus can be partly on the authors, but that becomes difficult in situations where you don't have a lot of access to sort of, you know, great English copy editing or whatever. Um, and then what are the, so this is my question to the editors uh that are here. What are the sorts of things that journals can do to um, you know, kind of try and level that particular linguistic uh, you know, barrier so that it's not like a first cut thing, but the language doesn't look good? And so we uh are moving towards, I mean, I'm just bringing up some of the uh issues that may lead in a very uh sort of needed way to reaction uh to rejection. How can a more inclusive or a different sort of editorial reviewing process deal with some of these uh these challenges?
And I just want to add one last question to that from my side. Uh, we have another ten minutes, so it would be nice if we can hear quick responses from people. The question that I have actually is that uh very often I find that when people struggle to write for a particular journal, they're actually struggling to write for a journal that they have never really held in their hands, read or looked at. Um, it's partly because the journals are not available. It's partly because if they are available, um, we have actually not been taught how to read them, right? So if you're not familiar with, because part of this is about form, part of this is about the specifics of debate, because no debate actually takes place in in a vacuum, right? It takes place in very, very concrete contexts. So it is about figuring out how to learn, how to read, uh being able to access material to read. All of these are big challenges. So I think it would be really nice if from Indiva, from Noshin, from from Tony and John, if we can hear one or two minute responses to these the questions, whichever ones you want to pick, that would be great. Fantastic. Thanks.
Uh, may, may I address that? Uh, so very quickly. So, so I think that this is um. Yeah, this is a, this is an incredibly uh challenging issue, but I think that that the challenge is not just at the threshold of, well, how do we address this, address this for journal writing? It actually has much deeper um, deeper roots um in Pakistan, especially uh again, when we're looking at the wide spectrum of public sector universities and the uh, the general sort of quality of education and standards of education and the kind of, and the emphasis on rote learning, which is, you know, secondary schools. And then I I teach at a leading public sector institution in in Karachi in in Pakistan and what we typically then get as students. And then this feeds into, you know, uh going further into higher education into into graduate education. That uh this this chokehold of of rote learning and the suppression of creative thinking is one of the reasons why students also, at least from what I can see, grapple with the with the challenges of of creative English writing skills. So this, this then feeds into other layers and other steps going forward. So I think that this challenge is a much bigger one and how to address this? I mean, for me, uh, you know, at at my university, we have foundation courses upon foundation courses upon foundation courses that start, you know, at at a very early stage for undergraduate and master's level students. And I'm now teaching master's level students and I'm, I spend a great amount of time uh helping them to, to write, to learn how to write in English, to structure their thoughts, to to, you know, to, and and this is, this is a constant, it's a constant challenge. And the those uh young students who go on uh into higher education, into pursuing masters and PhDs are the ones who might have flourished in any environment and and or perhaps coming from very privileged backgrounds. And when they're coming from Pakistan, but the wider, you know, the wider structure, the wider terrain is is this very challenging terrain of of generally, you know, a secondary education system that is just uh, that is just crippling our kids. And so how do we then manage this other issue of helping them to be able to write good English for for journal articles, right? So this is kind of the way I look at it, right? That the problem is much deeper than just this one thing.
Thanks, Nashin. Indiva, whenever next. Uh, John, go ahead, please.
Well, I I I can't agree more with what with what Nashin has said, you know, for example, IJIA is a very big journal, urban studies is a very big journal. But if we just take the country of Pakistan or the country of India, the scale of the problem uh and the roots of the of their challenges are something that an individual journal or the Urban Studies Foundation, for example, we cannot hope uh to resolve. I think, want to be clear though, that the point about English is about clarity and not necessarily sophistication. Um, if I can't understand what a sentence means, I can't possibly take it forward. We are sympathetic at first review stage if we can understand what is being said. Um, and we can do things like writing Urban India, but there is only so much a journal can do. Very, very briefly on the others, yes, we reject many, many, many famous scholars. We have a system which which is intended to be blinded, but of course, people know, can know, certain scholars don't hide it in fact, who they are. But I want to be clear, we've rejected many, many senior scholars and it is not seniority that we are interested in. It is quality. And we've received a lot of very negative feedback from some of those very senior colleagues. How dare you not publish me? Do you not know who I am? And we go, well, now we do. And yes, we're not. So, so please do not worry about that. Um, uh, in terms of knowledge of referees, Tony very clearly articulated, we have editor in chief, we have a specialist editor. Then we aim for three referees. Sometimes we achieve two, uh but we aim for three referees. Um, when we are editors and we receive the referees' comments, we often edit them uh in part to deal with something that Nashin said about certain phrases that uh referees might use which are inappropriate. But we might also look at them and say the referee has missed the point. But also you as a, as a scholar and responding to referees, if you have the opportunity to, you can say this referee's missed the point. They've got the, they they haven't got uh the the right end of the stick. Um, so mistakes do happen, um but you often have the opportunity to challenge them. We hope and most leading journals will hope that the levels of review that we go through make that less likely to happen. Thank you.
Indiva?
Yeah, um, I don't know if I have um, um, much to add, like, except from a writer's perspective. Or um I've, I've reviewed for IJIA now and it is a very challenging process. And I guess like all I can say um is, you know, taking forward what Nashin mentioned earlier, which is, you know, a sort of ethos of generosity when it comes to reviewing um and you know, taking that forward in our own practice. Um, and it it can happen that a reviewer will not understand what you're trying to say. And um, again, you know, this is something that um, as John was mentioning, we've all been through taking a step back is useful. You can uh, you know, respond to the, you you get an opportunity to respond to the editor and explain uh what you're doing and why it's valuable. Um, but, but um, yeah, and I guess, sorry, okay. Um, I I'll just stop there. Yeah, I I don't really have um anything more to say about the other questions that were asked, but um, when it comes to reviewing, I think that's something we can all take forward.
Johnny, would you like to add something?
Yeah, yeah, um, very quickly, um, because I agree with the things that have already been said. Um, as John said, bias, yes, uh, we definitely give established authors as hard a time as anybody else. Um, and uh, as John said, sometimes to their considerable chagrin, but um, but that is played fairly. Um, and anonymity is uh a very important dimension of what we do to try and achieve uh equal treatment of all potential authors uh who publish in the, in the, in the journal. Uh, on the, on the knowledgeability of reviewers, uh the only other thing I would add to what John's already said is that um, the editors who receive the reviews don't necessarily treat them neutrally. I mean, we read the reviews as well as the papers. And if we disagree with what's in a review, um, we will make that known. Um, so um we go to great lengths to try and make sure that the people that are reviewing papers are qualified to do so. Uh, and journal, journal, the process of journal publishing is a bit like democracy. It's the, it's the best worst system we can come up with. And now it's, 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 there's, there's no perfect system. It's as good as we can make it. Um, in terms of language uh and availability, uh what can journals do? Uh, well, journals, journals can't boil the ocean, you know, journals do uh as much as they can. Um, which includes engaging in events like this. Um, but we don't have the resources to be able to engage with a hundred papers in the course of a year, which have quality content, but um substandard English. We just simply couldn't do that. Um, part of the answer to it and part of the answer to the question that you raised and about availability goes back to uh what um uh Nashin was saying earlier on. Use your networks, use your networks and what Indiva was saying about writing being a social process. If there are areas of the process of authoring and getting published that you are weak on, um, then draw on your networks to help you with that. If there are papers that you need to see, but you can't access where you are, use your networks to send you copies of those papers so that you can use them. And if you truly, truly haven't ever read the journal that you're submitting to, never read a paper from it, um, then it's hard to conclude that you've done the due diligence of assuring yourself that it's the appropriate outlet for the work that you want to get to the public.
Yep. Thank you, thank you. Uh, thanks, everyone. Uh, it's been a lovely afternoon. Um, and I don't want to hold you up so much longer. It's already six fifteen. Um, I want to thank everyone and I'm going to name everyone. Uh, we have had people from um Karachi Urban Lab, University of Pennsylvania. Uh, although we keep thinking of Indiva as as belonging to Hyderabad Urban Lab uh forever. Um, we have had representatives from Urban Studies Journal and Urban Studies Foundation. And thank you very much for IHS um and EMI DS and for everyone else and all of the PhD students who are here. Uh, yes, you have a question? Very quick.
Hi, am I able? Uh, thank you. Uh, it's an incentive, like, uh thoughtful section. Uh, I just have a one clarity, like, uh, this uh co-authorship, just please throw out some thoughts on co-authorship. Uh, my doubt is the whether the co-authorship may lead to reduce this uh language barrier or it can be create some clarity about the articles. So just I want to light on this. Thank you.
That's a question that Indiva is actually very well placed on. So Indiva, do you want to take that quickly?
I mean, sure, I uh, I I'll, I'll address that and just make a very last quick point as well. I think co-authorship can be amazing, but it really, um, I find co-authorship works best if you have a really productive partnership and have people that are supporting each other. So my best experiences of co-authorship have been ones where it takes away from me this burden of like, do I know my contribution? Do I know, you know, the anxieties of being alone in that process are kind of taken away by having others to bounce ideas around with and you kind of finding a commonality gives you this confidence that I have something. But even then, you know, it's um, I I, and I think with language, yes, it can definitely help. Um, and that, that's definitely uh uh something to look into and pursue. But again, you know, work with people you trust and work with people who will um positively build your work forward. Um, and then with that, you know, the, the point I was making that even writing call collaboratively, you can arrive at this idea that, oh, I have a contribution. But there's been a lot of questions in the Q and A about how do you know you have a contribution? And I think that's a very good question and it is something that isn't, it isn't a science. You know, you can't put it in a calculator and say, yes or no, it has, it has a contribution. Um, and so, you know, uh, reading carefully what the aims and objectives of the journals are, but also looking at articles in those journals and trying to break down the anatomy of those articles and see where the author says this is what I'm doing. Um, and then see if you can replicate that with what you're saying. And, you know, it's also useful to think, um, I'm, I'm in the discipline of anthropology where everyone has such unique, wildly unique projects. And often I feel um a certain way because I study urban slums in the global south, which is probably one of the biggest fields, you know, in that room that there's so many people on this Zoom, there's so many people who study this topic. And so, you know, finding a contribution is really um fine tuning and figuring out, you know, what can I say that might be of interest to Nashin Anwar or to Anand American or to Karen Coyle, for example? But in, you know, so um, think about your contribution in terms of um novelty, trust your data and like try to present it in a useful way, but also put it in conversation with previous conversations. Um, and I'll, I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you, Indiva. Uh, I just want to end this by saying that maybe, I mean, this, this works for me to think of most of these things in the broad framework of friendships, right? And then you can't co-author unless you have a strong, robust friendship with someone. You can't write for a journal unless you have a certain kind of friend, friendship with that journal in some framework and that friendship could actually be quite anti-democratic, which is fine, right? But but you know that you can fight with your friends and you can kind of figure out where you stand with respect to each other. So think of it as, as, as part of life. It's not something which is away from life. It is part of life. All of those kind of things, yeah?
John?
John, you wanted to say something?
Just, just very quickly, um, uh, choose your life partner carefully. Choose your writing partner even more carefully.
Okay.
Um, I agree with friendship, um, but think about the extent to which your skills complement one another.
Yeah.
And think about whether that partnership addresses the challenges that you require to publish. Now, if you are relative equals, I think it's straightforward if your skills complement that you can push ahead uh and 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 write together. And that's often the most fruitful way. Uh, some of, some of my best work is in partnership. Um, I do think that another issue which requires careful attention, that institutions need to pay particular attention to is when a junior colleague uh works with a more senior colleague. Now, this can be extremely beneficial in terms of negotiating access to journal because of expertise, but there are key ethical issues. And again, this is something that as a journal, we've, we've, we've done particular schemes where we've joined senior scholars with more junior scholar scholars. But again, this becomes an issue for the institution uh because there are significant ethical issues. So I'm not saying don't do it. I'm saying there's value, but you have to do that carefully.
There is a technical question which may be of importance to many people. The question is, do peer-reviewed journals actually look for evidence that some articles have been cleared? The question is, do peer-reviewed journals actually look for evidence that some articles have been cleared for research by the ethics review committees? Do articles have to be written only from research conducted after the ethics committee review? Yes, no?
No.
No. You don't need any ethics committee review clearance for writing and submitting an article to peer-reviewed journals. Great, that's, thank you very much. Um. I I really don't have much more to say. Karen?
Right, no, I mean, I think this has been a pretty uh sort of practically useful as well as uh I'm sure, you know, given all of you a lot of uh sort of, you know, possibilities, but also some don'ts. Uh so hopefully this is, you know, not, not, not too daunting. And uh yeah, well, thanks very much to uh panelists uh online and to all of you for sitting through a long session.